Good evening and welcome to the September 19, 2024 Combined Work Session and Regular Meeting of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chad Brown. I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner of the Riverbend Township. I would like to welcome our viewers and thank Spectrum Cable and AT&amp;T for making it possible for our citizens and our television audience, live stream audience as well. I would like to present your Gaston County Commissioner, beginning on my far right.
Alan Frayley, Chair of the Township.
Good afternoon, Ronnie Worley, South Point Township.
Kathy Cloninger, Dallas Township.
Kim Johnson, Gastonia Township.
Good afternoon, Bob Hobus, joining via Zoom, Cowards Fountain Township.
Thank you all. I will now ask you to rise for the invocation given by Commissioner Worley and the Pledge of Allegiance given by Commissioner Johnson.
Would you pray with me? Gracious God, all that we have, all that we are, and all that we will be comes from you. You call us to be stewards of your gifts and caretakers of all that you've given us, Lord. Help us to use your gifts wisely. Teach us to share them unselfishly with grateful hearts. We offer this prayer in Jesus's name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The September work session is now called to order. I will ask, I would need to add one item additional to the work session, item E, the Commendation Recognition for recognizing the 85th anniversary of the Gaston County J.C.s. The first item on the agenda is Proclamation of Commendations, Awards, and Certificates. I would now ask Commissioner Johnson to please step up to the microphone.
With Mr. Juan Garcia and James Alvaro, Nancy Brogdon, Karina Dwyer, Riggy Gomez, Maria Bealan, Gomez Jordania, Sally James. Did I get everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that young man want to tell he's more than welcome?
Yes. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the culture, history, and contributions of Hispanic American citizens and highlights their countless achievements and contributions. And whereas the observation began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson, this was observed annually until 1988, when it was expanded by President Ronald Reagan to a period of September 15 through October the 15th, and became National Hispanic Heritage Month, and this has been celebrated annually since then. And whereas more than 60 million Americans of Hispanic origin today contribute to our national diversity, enriching the quality of American life with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their communities while adding their own distinct and dynamic perspective to the story of our country. And whereas this observation affords special opportunities to become more knowledgeable about Hispanic heritage and to honor the many Hispanic Americans who represent a significant and fast-growing demographic of Gaston County. We honor the invaluable ways these citizens contribute to our country and county. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim the month beginning September 15 and ending October 15, 2024 as National Hispanic Heritage Month, and urge all citizens to join us in celebrating the great contributions of Hispanic Americans to our county, state, and nations, to be adopted the 19th day of September 2024.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the County Commission, distinguished guests, and fellow community members, we want, we are deeply honored and humbled to receive this proclamation in celebration of the National Hispanic Heritage Month. This recognition is not just a testament of the rich cultural tapestry of our community, but also a celebration of contributions and achievements of the Hispanic Americans across the county and the nation. The National Hispanic Heritage Month is a time to reflect on the profound impact that Hispanic culture has had in our society. From the arts and sciences to business and public service, Hispanic Americans have enriched our lives and strengthened our communities. This month, we honor the legacy of those who came before us and paved the way to future generations. As we gather here today, I am reminded of the values that define our community: resilience, hard work, and a deep sense of family and community. These values have guided us through challenges and have been the foundation of different successes. It is through these shared values that we continue to build a brighter future for all. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the County Commissioners for this recognition and for their continued support of our community. Your commitment to celebrating diversity and fostering inclusion is truly commendable. To my fellow community, community members, this proclamation is a reminder of the strength and unity that comes from embracing our heritage. Let us continue to celebrate our culture, share the stories, and inspire the next generation to reach for their dreams. Thank you once again for this honor, and together we will continue to make our community a place where everyone can thrive and where the contributions of all are valued and celebrated. Gracias. Thank you.
Juan, before you go.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to say something. I want to say a special thank you to all of you because you're leaders in our community, and we need you. We need you to bridge a gap, but also to make that gap smaller. So I want to say thank you to all of you and what you do. Continue the efforts, and please let us know how we can continue to help, whether it be via the TV that we have, our visuals on, that we can do things to help the community, because I don't know how much they get to watch that channel, but I want to make sure that you guys know that you're a big part of our community. If there's anything we can do, you please let us know. We'll make sure we help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Board of Commissioners, thank you again. I can't say, I can't follow up anything what Juan said. And I was just up here a couple of days ago, and I promise I'm not saying the same thing. But what I am saying is, I am inviting each and every one of you to come out to WOW Supermarket this Sunday from 11 till 8 p.m. We're going to have music, live wrestling, we're going to have a bunch of food trucks. I mean, everyone's smiling, so that's a start. So come on out. This is a great time. Like I said, it's bridging the gap, right? That's what we're doing. So Police Department, the community, it doesn't get any better than this.
Juan, do you guys have a flyer for that?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, can you get that to Adam?
Yes.
And Adam, if you, I don't know where Adam went, he's probably preparing for his, if you guys could just get that up for this week, just to see how many times we can run it through there, just to get you guys. But thank you.
Okay. Thank you guys so much. Appreciate it.
Man, obviously the wrestling card. I mean, nobody here wants to be in the heavyweight division against me, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The great Kabuki. I will now call on Commissioner Johnson as well, proclamation for September 25, 2024's National Day of Remembrance for Homicide Victims.
Okay, for District Attorney, Travis Page will come up, Tara Joyner, Hope United Survivor Network, and Chief Zill to accept this. Okay. Whereas the United States faces a profound tragedy with over 21,000 homicides annually, underscoring the critical need to remember and support the victims and their families. And whereas North Carolina rates sixth in the United States for deaths by homicide, reflecting the urgent need for continued efforts in victim support and violence prevention. And whereas the Gaston County District Attorney's Office launched its first Families of Homicide Support Group in 2024, a significant step in providing dedicated support to those affected by violent crime. And whereas we believe in honoring the memory of victims and acknowledging the resulting long-term trauma for families and communities, this National Day of Remembrance is an essential way of promoting public awareness and remembering our loved ones. And whereas the collective efforts of the Gaston County District Attorney's Office, Gaston County Department of Survivor Services, Gaston County Police Department, Gastonia City Police Department, First Baptist Church, Solid Foundations Counseling, and supportive community members demonstrate a profound commitment to supporting grieving families in their healing journeys. And whereas it is our unwavering commitment to honor those who have lost their lives to violent crimes and to stand with families who have experienced such profound loss. And whereas we urge all citizens of Gaston County to join in our first-ever National Night of Remembrance for Murder Victims candlelight vigil on September 25 at the Rotary Pavilion, beginning at 7 p.m. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners proclaim September 25 as National Day of Remembrance for Homicide Victims. And we encourage all citizens to join in honoring the memory of the victims, supporting their families, and committing to the ongoing fight against violence in our communities, to be adopted the 19th day of September 2024.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you for the proclamation tonight and for your commitment to supporting the victims of violent homicide in this community. Over the past three years, I've had the occasion, unfortunately, to sit in many meetings with a mother, or a father, or a brother, or sister who have lost someone to violent homicide. And through those meetings, what came about is essentially what manifested this year in May with the development of a homicide family support group here in Gaston County. We meet on the first Tuesday of every month at First Baptist Church. Dwayne Burks, pastor over there, has opened his doors to the families. I have three families behind me tonight, three families that you are supporting through your commitment, not only tonight, but also what you've done in allowing Survivor Services to assist us and also enabling Chief Zill here. And I want to give Chief Zill some recognition for allowing his detectives to come and meet with those families. We have members from my office and members from the Gaston County Police Department and the City Police Department who are there for the first, at least the first 30 minutes of those meetings, and they typically last an hour to an hour and a half. And they're there to answer questions that folks might have about their investigations or their particular cases. But we've taken a lot more out of that than just being there as a resource. We've really connected with these families that you see behind us. I want to encourage everyone to come to the Rotary Pavilion next week, September 25, 7 o'clock. We're going to have a memorial service for the first time in this county for the victims of violent homicide. And to those who are watching or those in attendance, if your family has been affected by homicide, I want you especially there. If you have photographs of your loved ones that you would like to share with us, I'd like for you to share those. There's a flyer with a QR code where you can submit a photograph of your loved one. You can also bring it by the DA's office. We'll make sure that your loved one is recognized next week. So thank you again for your commitment to public safety and also compassion for these families. Thank you.
Travis, thank you because those families are the ones that needed the most. And thank you for your commitment to continuing to work with those families. And as this county leader, that's one of the things that we ask for is advocacy, and you've done that. So thank you. And to the families, we still pray for you guys, and hopefully you can have some closure during all this from these occasions. But thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Hope United Survivor Network and the Community Response Team upon receiving the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Civil Excellence Award for the Dale Project for the DALE Project, which is the Danger Assessment of Law Enforcement. I would direct the, is Travis still over there? Attorney Travis Page, if you will please come forward to the podium and accept the award that was given. From the Survivor Network, anyone else who wants to receive the award can come up, be a part of that. But just wanted to congratulate you guys for what's happened. We accepted that at the County Commissioners Association Awards. On behalf of you guys, I'm very thankful for, obviously, the recognition. It's the hard work that you guys have put in for this, and so thank you for your service to do that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, take one more point of personal privilege and speak to that. I want to say thank you for the support, not only to you, Mr. Chairman, but the members of the board, for empowering the county to take such a stance against domestic violence. Coming up in October, we have Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we have made domestic violence a priority in my administration. We're building on the work of others who have come before us and have done great things for this county for domestic violence or to combat domestic violence. And, you know, we've had a, we've got a vision for how we want to combat domestic violence in this community. The first thing was to implement what we call the DALE and what we've been recognized for, the Danger Assessment for Law Enforcement. And what that is, is an 11-question tool where every officer across the county who responds to a domestic call, they ask a survivor these 11 questions. And they could range from, has he ever threatened suicide? Has the violence escalated? Does he own a firearm in the property? And so these questions, my prosecutors now have a lot more information about a case than what's just on the warrant. And we can communicate that to a judge. We've had over 700 DAILS administered over the first year that this program's been implemented. And we've seen tougher bonds, we've seen, we've seen more convictions, we've seen tougher sentences, more accountability for violent offenders. And we actually parlayed that and built on that work to go to what I consider Phase Two, and that's the creation of what we call a High-Risk Fatality Prevention Team, where we're not looking just to prosecute domestic violence, but we're actually looking to prevent domestic violence and partner homicides. One of the things from the Geiger Institute, they said, if partner homicide is predictable, it's preventable. And so that's the approach that we're looking to take with what we're doing. We have folks, you know, this is truly a community collaboration. We have the county police, and Chief Zill was instrumental in helping us formulate our policy, getting his officers to buy in. We have JIMs who created the template to make it easy online for these officers to complete the 11-question supplement that is being emailed in real time to my office and to Hope United. And so in addition to law enforcement across the county, I mean, we have 14 departments across the county working together with a standardized approach to domestic violence. And so I commend all those chiefs and their officers for buying in as well. But the last thing that we really want to see happen is we want to see a domestic violence courtroom on the fifth floor of this courthouse and with a co-located family justice center that can work and support that. And so our victims and our survivors have a trauma-informed, safe space to where we can seek justice for them. And so this board has been wonderful when it comes to supporting our efforts. And so I thank you guys for your leadership, for your vision, for the work that you've already put in well before 2021, when I took office, when, when the folks behind me started working. So thank you. We feel honored to build upon that, and I thank you tonight.
Well, thank you. I wanted to say something about the domestic violence. Obviously, it's been a continued process. I mean, it seems to be one of the hardest processes for the police officer, anyone in your office or any of the judges having to go through this because of different situations. We've all seen or know someone in a sad situation. We have to go through these types of things. But I want to say thank you guys for your commitment to continuing those efforts. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
I think it's Commissioner Worley will be doing the proclamation to proclaim the month of September 2024 as Preparedness Month.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would ask Scott Hunter or his designee to come up. Chief, if you want to come up. Again, as the chairman said, this is to proclaim the month of September 2024 as Preparedness Month. And if you're old enough to remember, what were we doing 35 years ago this week here in Gaston County and from Charleston right on through? Do you remember?
Hugo.
Hugo. I was a newly assigned state trooper working, and I got sent to Charlotte where, just like Gaston County, was just devastating. Scott, you were probably in Charlotte at that same time, too. So it is appropriate that we would declare this month as Preparedness Month. Whereas all North Carolinians should be prepared for natural and man-made disasters as well as disease outbreaks. Whereas North Carolina is traditionally an active state for tornadoes, straight-line winds, severe thunderstorms. Communities across the state experienced severe damage in 2023 with 24 tornadoes, 139 flood incidents, 844 severe thunderstorms with damaging wind and hail. The National Weather Service in North Carolina also issued 51 tornado warnings, 751 thunderstorm warnings, 106 flash flood warnings. Whereas every community, business, family, and individual in Gaston County must be ready for natural and man-made disasters, including tornadoes, flooding, hurricanes, public disturbances, disease outbreaks that might disrupt normal daily activities. Whereas all Gaston County residents can take a few simple steps to know the risk for their area, plan accordingly by making a family disaster plan, creating an emergency supply kit and staying informed. Whereas Gaston County residents should know the risk for their area, plan accordingly. They should help the elderly and those who cannot help themselves, and should include the safety of pets, livestock, in their emergency plans. Whereas Gaston County Office of Emergency Management and Fire Services, the North Carolina Emergency Management, the State of North Carolina have collaborated to recognize September as North Carolina Preparedness Month. We encourage Gaston County residents to be disaster-ready. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim the month of September 2024 in Gaston County as Preparedness Month. We encourage all residents to make those disaster plans, personal response, take personal responsibility and priority, and be prepared by assembling their emergency kits, updating their plans. This will be adopted tonight, the 19th of September. And as we know, going back 35 years ago, some of us had never been without power for weeks, two weeks, three weeks at a time, but we experienced it right here in Mecklenburg County was the same way. So Chief, appreciate all you do for our community. If you'd like to accept that and say a few words, I'll take my notes off there. Thank you.
You said it all. So, but the importance of preparedness can't be overstated. And everyone in this room, especially the governing body of the county, we've experienced that over the last several years especially. And so we know how quickly a disaster emergency can occur and strike. So preparedness is the cornerstone of ensuring that our loved ones are safe. And so I do encourage everyone to follow us on social media, research, do your own due diligence to research and find other ideas on preparedness tools and ideas. And I assure you, the emergency management is here to do our due diligence, and we just need the community. We just want to make sure the community is not behind the eight ball if something occurs again. So, thank you. Yes, sir.
I want to say something for you guys. If you guys remember, I think it was April or May when our last really storm came through. Storms come at all different times. You were actually out of town, I think, on business work, and we got a commendation from the state about how our preparedness was. Obviously, the bull was by the horns, and we've got it, and the community never suffered. And so I want to thank you for your staff and doing things of how that works. So thank you so much and continue to put it together. But I just wanted to let you know what that, the state was talking about, what a wonderful job we had done during that one. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next item is Item E, has been the J.C.'s commendation. I will now ask Commissioner Kloneger to please step forward and recognize the 85th anniversary of the Gaston County J.C.'s. Anyone here from the J.C.'s?
Could, Mr. Kendrick McDowell, who I met the other night. Hey, how are y'all doing? Don't tell her away. Be close. Come on. Whereas on September 13, 1939, the Gaston J.C.'s chapter was officially chartered under the leadership of its first president, Basil Whitner, marking the beginning of an extraordinary journey of community service, leadership, and civil engagement. Whereas for 85 years, the Gaston County, Gaston J.C.'s have remained dedicated to the ideas of service and leadership development, impacting the lives of countless individuals across the community. And whereas the Gaston J.C.'s have spearheaded major community projects, including the beloved Gastonia Christmas Parade, which is now celebrating its 70th year, the distinguished service awards, which have honored community leaders for 74 years, the annual back-to-school shopping initiative still going strong after 30 years, and the David Gaines Memorial Scholarship, which has awarded many deserving Gaston County high school seniors since its inception in 1970. And whereas the Gaston J.C.'s continues to be the premier young professional organization for individuals between the ages of 21 and 40, providing leadership training, networking opportunities, community service, and lifelong friendships. And whereas in 1985, the Gaston J.C.'s proudly welcomed women into the organization, and six women have since served as president. Ms. Andrea Greer has the distinction of being the only Gaston J.C. to serve as North Carolina State President. And whereas in 2024, Mr. Kendrick McDowell was elected as the first black American president of the Gaston J.C.'s, continuing the chapter's commitment to celebrating diverse perspectives and cultivating a collaborative network among young adults. Now therefore it be resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners commends and celebrates the 85th anniversary of the Gaston J.C.'s, recognizing their longstanding and contributions to the community, their commitment to leadership, and their dedication to service. Let this milestone be a testament to their continued success and shape in the future of Gaston County and beyond to be adopted the 19th day of September 2024.
I'm a little taller than she is. Mr. Chairman and the board, thank you all for recognizing our organization on this incredible milestone of serving Gaston County for the past 85 years. In a time where across the state, many chapters and the nation are closing and folding, we take great pride here in Gaston County to be continuing to be a place where young professionals can grow, learn, and contribute to making our community a better place. Although we've, I've only been a part of this organization for a few years, we've benefited immensely from the legacy of those who have come before us, and we got to meet a lot of those people on last Thursday, on last Sunday, excuse me, last Friday, when we celebrated our 85th in Gastonia. And the passion and dedication that they showed us continue to inspires us. Before I conclude, I would be remiss if I didn't encourage anyone who knows a young professional between the ages of 21 and 40 to come out to a meeting, give us a try, join us. We're always looking for more people to get involved and get back to our community. We meet on the fourth Tuesday of each month across Gaston County, with our next meeting happening right here in Gastonia at Barristers inside of the Esquire Hotel. Our meetings happen around 6 to 8 o'clock, and we would love to have more people come out and be a part of what we're trying to do. So again, I thank you all for this honor, and we are extremely excited to continue to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say one thing. We've been in the parade every year as a Gaston County, but we've never won the best float. You think we could get that this year?
So we have no control over that. That is actually, keep Gaston, you beautiful, but we appreciate your support during the parade also.
No, thank you guys so much for what you do.
Thank you.
It is a great pleasure for the Gaston County Board of Commissioners to honor citizens who have given unselfishly of their time, talent, skills, energies, and service as an appointee to one of our many boards and commissions. This type of service is the foundation of citizen involvement in our county government and is helpful to shape the future of our community. We gratefully acknowledge the work of the following individuals or individual, and the certificate appreciation has been forwarded to him. Dr. Morgan Hushard, Planning Board. The next item is citizens' recognition. Our, a portion of the board's agenda is set aside for the purpose of allowing citizens the opportunity to offer comments and suggestions. This comment period is intended to require the commission or staff to not answer questions or to answer, provide a response. Question requiring a response shall be answered as soon as possible, either through the chair or the county manager's office. Citizens' recognition will be limited to three minutes tonight. As I call your name, please step to the podium, state your name and address. The first citizen signed to speak is Ms. Sharon Paget.
Good evening, Sharon Paget. My address is 816 Springs Road, Dallas, North Carolina. Thank you, Chairman Brown, Commissioners, and staff for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Sharon Paget, and I serve as the CEO of the Gaston County Family YMCA. The Gaston County Family Y has been a pillar of our community since the late 1880s. When the YMCA started on the corner of Main and Marietta, the Y location would later serve as the first library of Gastonia. We are now spread from Mount Holly to Cherryville with stops in between at our Y's in McCaddenville and in Gastonia. We have been supporting families, promoting health, and fostering belonging since. I'm excited to be here and share with you about the Stowe Family YMCA Expansion and Renovation Project on the eastern side of Gaston County. The Y's part of the, is a part of the 650-plus million-dollar economic development happening right now at the intersection of the new Caramont Belmont Hospital and YMCA Drive. We have approved plans to build an outdoor water park starting in two weeks that will open Memorial Day 2025, of new construction that will include a multipurpose family gym, new youth family wing for larger spaces to serve our seniors, more space for children and after-school and summer camp, child watch, a new chapel, outdoor pickleball courts, and added parking. In addition, we will renovate over 37,000 square feet of our existing facilities. Our campaign goal is $13.5 million, and I'm happy to share that today we have raised $12.6 million. And we recently had an anonymous donor come forward who has offered a $1 million match, and we currently have matched over half of that since this announcement. The cost of the project sits at $15.7, so we certainly have a gap. I would like you, I would like to ask you, the Commissioners, as representatives of the county, to consider a $200,000 contribution to this campaign. With a match in place, your impact will be over $400,000. The YMCA, we are for youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. Thank you, Chairman Brown, Commissioners and staff, for the opportunity to speak tonight about an exciting opportunity for our community's future. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker will be Mr. Todd Huestetler.
Ready? My name's Todd Huestetler, 302 Flynn Hill Road, Sheriff of North Carolina. My thing tonight is the article about the Sheriff's Department on July 12th, Gaston County Sheriff's Department, led by Chad Hawkins. In the article here, and it's a tax- My thing tonight is the article about the Sheriff's Department on July the twelfth, Gaston County Sheriff's Department led by Chad Hawkins. In the article here, and as taxpayer, all the taxpayers of Gaston County needs to be concerned about this. We had a, our last sheriff, Alan Kloniger, was in office, I think, eighteen years, and the best I can remember, Sheriff Kloniger never went over his budget. But here on the article, it says, and the Gaston County Sheriff's Officer, Office overspent its budget for staff and has not been following county policies. Now, the head of this is Chad Hawkins. It's not his deputies, it's him. And it says also, the new officers, the policy when hiring new officers. From what I've been told, he hired a lot of his buddies. Your money. I've heard this is over three million dollars he overspent his budget. Now taxpayers, if you don't care about spending your money, this here is a disgrace. This is a disgrace to the Sheriff's Department, it's a disgrace to Gaston County, it's a disgrace to the taxpayers. You know, over three, overspent his budget, three million dollars? How can a man do that? In the first year, I think it is, you know? And then, I think that that's gonna, spending like this can raise your taxes, which all of y'all know, my house is paid for, yeah, taxes, it ain't paid for. Your taxes come, you find out. This is the kind of stuff that the taxpayers of Gaston County needs to stand up against. I know the county commissioners did an audit. I appreciate our commissioner, Kim Johnson, who did a great job. She did a great job. But I think that there needs to be an outside source to come in here and do an investigation. I want to know where all this money went. You know, overspend your budget, they, I've been told by county commissioners, it's over three million dollars. You know, are you overpaying you, your buddies that come in? Let's check that out, you know? But I'm just saying, as a taxpayer, talking directly to the taxpayers, there's a problem at that Sheriff's Department. We never had this problem when Alan Kloniger was sheriff. We never had this problem. He never ran over his budget, three million dollars? And you know, people sit around and say, oh, well, he's a conservative, he's a Republican. Well, you know, they get happy too, I guess. And, you know, but don't criticize a Democrat, by God, when you doing the same thing, you know, and I'm not a Democrat, trust me. That's all I'm gonna say tonight, but to the taxpayers of Gaston County, three million dollars, think about that. Three million, it ain't three-hundred thousand? From what they said, he spent over the budget, three million dollars.
Mr. Hustetler, if you could wrap it up, please.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you. I do just want to reiterate something that I know that we had talked about before and ongoing, I think the county manager has met with the sheriff and each month, so that is something that's happening, and sheriff has been obliging, and they have been coming forth with a lot of information, different pieces of the puzzle. So those are all things that are being, taking care of, the sheriff is doing that job for, with the county manager. The next item on the agenda is presentation by Adam Gob, who is Communications Director Committee and Grant Project Director. Update on goals and work of Gast, the Gaston County twenty-five-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty committee leading up to July fourth, twenty-twenty-six. Mr. Gob.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you so much for your time this evening. I'm gonna give you just a quick presentation about what Gaston County is doing as we prepare for America's two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday coming up here in a little less than two years. So basically, what has happened is the federal government has kind of launched a program, pushed it down to the states, and then the states have pushed it out to counties, and then local nonprofits, municipalities to form committees. And so we're one of, only about a third of North Carolina's counties that have actually formed a committee. The board earlier this year thankfully approved our resolution to form that committee, and then just over about a month or so ago, we received ten thousand dollars in grant funds. We're one of the first counties to receive grant funds as part of that initial tranche of funding that's available. So just real quick, in terms of who's doing the work, this committee was assembled earlier this year. Want to give a big shout out to Jane Kahler, who's at the Gaston County Public Library. She's our chair, she helped kind of get the ball rolling on this. We've got more than forty members, close to fifty now, with representation from across Gaston County. And if there's any of those members that are here this evening that would be willing to, to say hello, I'd appreciate that. I know Dandrea from my staff is here, and we've got Ally from the museum. Thank you so much for everybody for being here. I really appreciate that. We've got six subcommittees, so we've got one on marketing, research grants, budgeting events, and now outreach and education. And so those committees and the subcommittees will really do a lot of the work here over the next twenty months or so. As I mentioned, there's a lot of county department support. So my entire team from communications is involved in helping with this project, just about everybody at the Museum of Art and History as well, library, parks, recreation, and tourism, and you can see kind of going down the list. We've got tremendous support from a number of different departments here at the county. So this is kind of what you're going to be seeing a lot more of, hopefully, fingers crossed. Logos and all the different materials that we produce go to the state for approval for their Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, so they're the ones that do all the approval process. But this is basically what you're gonna see on the website that we're building, on any of the materials that we produce. So it kind of merges both the themes of the traditional red, white, and blue with the county logo that we have and that we've been using for the past about three years. So I'm gonna give you just kind of a quick sneak preview of the website, and it's basically one that we have built, so it's gonna live on the Gaston County website, and it'll go live here in a couple of weeks. It's in the review process right now by the state, but basically, it's gonna be the main source of information, where we're gonna be able to post any of the videos, any of the brochures that we post, podcasts. There's a calendar towards the bottom that basically we'll be able to put events on. So anytime that we've got a presence at a local community event, or anytime the committee itself is hosting an event, we'll be able to publicize that and put that out. So with the ten thousand dollars that we've already been approved for, there's a couple of different things that we're going to do with that. So there's bookmarks that we'll be able to print and get those handed out. It's got a QR code that's gonna take people back to the website. There's also gonna be brochures. Our committees are gonna work on those in terms of putting good information in there to highlight some of the key things that have happened in Gaston County's history as it plays a part of America's two-hundred-and-fifty years. There'll also be branded items that we'll be handing out at different community events. So what can you expect to see over the next about two years or so? There'll be a lot of videos that we'll produce internally, highlighting key local historical events, so anything from the Battle of Kings Mountain to different historical events, people, key things that have happened in Gaston County that kind of tie into the rich fabric of America's history. As I mentioned before, the bookmarks and the brochures are something that we're doing now, and then there'll be events not only that we have presence at, but eventually that we'll be doing events of our own to really kind of push this out there and celebrate America, not just on July fourth, twenty-twenty-six, but really leading up to it. The next steps, we'll be presenting to all the different councils around Gaston County. As I mentioned, we have the ten thousand dollar grant, but there is more funding available. Both municipalities and nonprofits have the ability to apply for thirty thousand dollar grants, so we'll be talking with them about that possibility and then being able to work that in with the committee that we have established. And then just spreading the word. So this is just kind of that first step about telling folks what we're doing, why we're doing it, and it's just a great chance to kind of bring folks together and to celebrate our country and Gaston County's proud part of becoming a nation nearly two-hundred-and-fifty years ago. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or I'll get out of your hair.
Any questions from the Board of Commissioners this time? Seeing none, Adam, I, I like it, thank you. I don't know how much effort it would be to change over. I like that logo a lot better than the current scheme that we currently have, just to be honest, but I mean, it's just me. Thank you, Adam.
You're welcome.
The next item is other matters. Are there any other matters need to come before the board at this time? Seeing none, I'll make one right quick. Mr. Matt Johnson, please, if you don't mind, coming up here real quick to the front, just so they can see you on TV. Matt was just recognized as the, and Chief, if you want to join him, you can do whatever, he can come up here, just, I like you standing there by yourself, makes you look good. But Matt is the newest Assistant Chief of Police here for the Gaston County Police Department, so congratulations.
Thank you very much, commissioners.
Oh, on the front, so make sure everybody gets to see you. His nickname is Mongo, but that was when we used to ride together, and he used to turn around, turn around so everybody can see you. But Matt, congratulations, well deserved, for all the things you've done here in our community. I just wanted to recognize you and embarrass you for, he said he's an embarrassable, so thank you.
Thanks very much.
This includes our work session, and the regular work, session will come back here, the regular meeting convene immediately. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions, those go to Donna S. Buff, seven-oh-four-eight-six-six-three-one-nine-six. I will now call to order the September regular meeting, call it to order to Commissioner Hovis, are you still online with us, sir?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, good deal. We'll now go into a public hearing. The commission will take comments, citizens' comments on for public hearing. Citizens' comments will be taken on the following issues. Economic Development Commission authorized incentive grant for Project Flower. Economic Development authorized incentive grant for Project Cat. Economic Development Commission authorized incentive grant for Project Daisy Gator. This also to request to apply to the NCDOT PTD FY twenty-six Community Transportation Program. Before we begin, let me outline the rules and procedures of the hearing. Citizens wishing to make comment will be recognized by the chair, then requested a step to the microphone for their comments. Citizens will take their, will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. All questions shall be directed to the chair for response. The chair shall rule in all points of order. Do I have a motion to go into? Motion made by Commissioner Worley, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. All in favor? Commissioner Hovis?
Approve.
Thank you. All right, so without her beautiful pink blazer, she's coming to the podium. Will now take citizens' comments on public hearing to approve a Gaston County Level One incentive grant pursuant to NCGEN, General Statute one-fifty-eight dash seven point one, to authorize Gaston County to enter into an economic development agreement with Project Flower.
Thank you, Chairman Brown.
Ms. Alicia Summy, Economic Development Assistant Director, will provide a brief overview once she has completed her comments. Citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Summy.
Thank you. And regarding the pink blazer, Dr. Eagle used to match me, so once you wear it, I'll bring it back.
From now on, incentives, we wear the pink blazer. Go ahead.
All right, so Project Flower is a project we've been working on with the state of North Carolina for the past few months. They're actually looking at an existing facility here in Gaston County that's been vacant, it's twenty thousand square feet, so they're looking to lease that building as well as outfit that building, add in about one-point-five million dollars to the building and machine and equipment. They're also gonna create twenty-two new jobs, and the salary is approximately fifty-five thousand dollars per year, which is higher than the county's average annual wage right now. That's right at about fifty thousand dollars per year. This company is a botanical manufacturer of body care and wellness products. They extract hemp and CBD oils and put that into different types of body care, like lotion, scrubs, and they've actually been working with Gaston College for quite a while now with the Fiber Innovation Center, putting these products into certain fibers, so at some point, they actually may work with different textile companies and get that in there. So they're really, they already have a commitment to our county, but now they're looking to relocate their current manufacturing into our county. This is in the city of Gastonia as well, so they will hear it in October for the Level One incentive, was it, which is a five-year incentive.
Thank you, ma'am. Any citizens wishing to comment on this? Any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Commissioner Hovis?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Hovis, motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioner Hovis. The commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearing to approve Gaston County Level One incentive grant pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one-fifty-eight dash seven point one, and authorize Gaston County to enter into an economic development agreement with Project Cat. Ms. Alicia Summy, Economic Development Assistant Director, will provide a brief overview once she has completed her comments. Citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Summy.
Thank you, Chairman Brown. Again, this is a Level One incentive grant, so a five-year grant. This is an existing company in Gaston County, they're in the city of Gastonia as well, so Gastonia will hear this in October. They're looking to invest three-point-five million dollars in its existing operations, they're gonna bring in some machinery and equipment as well, create ten new jobs with an average annual wage of fifty-six thousand dollars per year, which again is higher than the county's average annual wage. What's important about this project is they actually have locations overseas where the product that they're hoping to make here is being made elsewhere, so they're wanting to have that here be closer to their customers as well, and if something happens, it'll be made right here in Gaston County. We're working with the state on this project as well. They're offering a building reuse grant and a one NC for the job creation.
Thank you, ma'am. Any citizens wishing to comment at this time? Any questions from the Board of Commissioners?
Observation, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
We hear this conversation often from other businesses in Gaston County that we only go after assisting new companies kind of located in Gaston County. The three that we're dealing with tonight basically are expansions of individuals who already have some level of interest or investment in our county. I think this shows that we actually do many things to support existing business and help those grow and do things. Just wanted to point that out to some people because people don't often see that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. It's a pretty nice view you got there, Commissioner Hovis, just so you know. The county commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearing to approve a Gaston County Level One incentive grant pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one-fifty-eight dash seven point one, and to authorize Gaston County enter into an economic development agreement with Project Daisy Gator. I always wanted to say that, so that's why. Ms. Alicia Summy, Economic Development Commission Assistant Director, provide a brief overview once she has completed her comments. Citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Daisy Gator, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Brown. I believe the company requested that project name, it did not come from our office, but again, this is an existing company in Gaston County looking to expand their operations here, Level One grant, five-year grant. What's important about this one, again, they have hundreds of locations across the world, a lot in the United States, so they could take this expansion anywhere, but they're hoping to do it right here in Gaston County, so it's very important for us to continue our relationship with them. They are looking to purchase an existing building that is vacant, but put in two million dollars of outfit to that facility. Later on down the road, they're gonna put in new machinery and equipment as well, which will create more jobs at a later time. Let's see, yep, so they're bringing some of the production jobs back that actually left the U.S. years ago. I believe they were moved to Mexico and a few other places, so with this outfit of the existing building, they're gonna be able to bring that production back to Gaston County.
Thank you, ma'am. Any citizen wishing to comment at this time? Seeing none, any from the Board of Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Johnson. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Okay, I didn't close the public hearing like I should have, but I was close enough, people knew. The county commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearing to request permission to apply for the NCDOT PTD FY twenty-six Community Transportation Grant, fifty-three-eleven, grant to provide rural public transportation services entered into an agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation, NCDOT, and provide necessary assurances and required local match. I will now miss, ask Ms. Tawana Littlejohn, Transportation Coordinator, to provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Littlejohn, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Brown. I would like to present to you the FY twenty-six Community Transportation Program Grant. This is a state and federally funded program administered by the Public Transportation Division. The transportation system has goals to achieve the definition of coordinated transportation service. Those goals are the general public transportation services in North Carolina. services in North Carolina, in rural North Carolina, and to provide a coordinated network, enhance access to healthcare, shopping, education, employment, public services, recreation, and to encourage the most efficient use of transportation funds through coordination of programs and services. As a part of the administration grant, administrative grant, we will request the total amount of $235,261 with a 15% local match of $35,290. The admin grant will help cover salaries and fringe benefits of the transportation administrator and the billing specialist, and also to support the cost of training, travel, and our leased computer software, which is our scheduling software, route match. The combined capital portion of the grant, we are requesting a total of $495,700 with a 10% local match of $49,570. This grant, the combined capital grant, will be used to replace four vehicles that have met their useful life, which is 100,000 miles. Thank you.
Thank you. Any citizens wishing to comment on this matter? Seeing none, and the Board of Commissioners? Mr. Cloninger.
I just have a quick question. Is this a new grant?
No, this is a grant that we get every year.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Motion made by Commissioner Worley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. This concludes tonight's public hearing. I will now ask for approval of the business agenda with no items, any items need to be pulled off the business agenda. Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the business agenda with no items pulled. I also want to add that I add the J.C.'s commendation to the agenda now that nothing has been pulled. Donna keeps me straight, saying you all have to be good on that one. So a motion made by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner Cloninger. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. I apologize, Commissioner Hovis. The next item is approval of the drafts minutes for the regular meeting of 8:27, special meeting 9:09, closed session 9:09. Any revisions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve by all of them, Mr. Chair.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next item is approval of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda with no items pulled? Motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Commissioner Worley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next item is items pulled, which were none. Items from motions by the majority, which were none. Appointments, Commissioner Fraley.
I have one, Mr. Chair. Library Board of Trustees, new appointment, one to Wyatt.
Seconded by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Worley?
No, one, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cloniger?
I have one for the Sarah Local Planning Committee for Tipton, Don Mally.
Seconded by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Johnson?
I have two appointments, one for juvenile crime prevention, and it's Dr. Rebecca Powers. My second appointment is the Lake Wiley Marine Commission, and it's Tom Bailey.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fraley. All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Hovis, do you have anything?
If I do, I do not have you in front of me, sir.
No problem, sir. We'll just move on to mine. For JCPC, recommendation for the DHS Board, Mr. Joe Shepherd. Seconded by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next one is a full board appointment for the Lake Wiley Marine Commission. You had Tom Bailey, right? Did you put, we already put that on there? Then good, we don't have to worry about it. Thank you very much. We already took care of it. Thank you. Reports, Commissioner Fraley. Mr. Worley. Commissioner Cloniger?
I have a report. So these are the places I went to in September. I attended the Professional Women's Association luncheon with Celia Hatchell. I also attended the Dallas 9/11 Remembrance Service Celebration, and that was on September the 11th. I attended the 85th Celebration of the J.C.'s on September the 13th, and then I also attended the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Also in attendance was our county manager, Ray Maxwell, and Brian Skiba, and now we have a collaboration between Parks and Rec and Travel and Tourism. And that's all, Commissioner.
Mr. Johnson? Commissioner Hovis, anything?
Aye, ma'am, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that this week I had the opportunity to go to Camp Lejeune, and I want to thank Scott. I know you were down there for a while, so thank you for your service. Any other veterans in the audience, please stand? Now to get me to my next point, Mr. McCabe, I want to thank you for your service as well, young man. Obviously, lots going on with you, and if we can do of anything or be in service for your family while you're gone, please let us know, sir. Thank you. County managers report, their report.
County attorneys report.
Mr. Chairman, may I please request a brief closed session pursuant to General Statute Section 143-318.11, subsection A1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential information, subsection A3, to consult with the attorney, and subsection A5, to establish or instruct the staff concerning a proposed employment contract.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Commissioner Johnson to go into closed session. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. We are now in closed session. We are now in closed session.